Hey, welcome to David here. Can do another stream today on one of my areas of expertise. Actually something I probably get asked more about than anything else, which is finance, day trading. People who know me know I used to work as a day trader in the financial field. I was relatively pretty successful at it. Currently, I work in still financial fields like financial engineering for construction. I went back to university, spent a year in master's school at University of Michigan in construction management, although I first dropped out of school to day trade and was relatively successful at it. I always had a good mind for mathematics and numbers, charts and patterns. And there's something called technical analysis. Anyone who trades stocks, you know, as you look at charts and you see what's going on with that. So let me just give a quick idea of what I'm talking about. Let me enter screen share here and let's just look at what's happening with the market today. So here we got, you know, the market's down 2% today. Just Yahoo Finance, Dow Jones Industrials down 550 points today over 2%. We look at the chart going back. Sorry, let me could have done a little better preparation, but you look at the chart going back and we have you know, today, the market down quite a bit. If we look at a five-year, we see President Trump came in in 2016 and the market's been up quite a bit, although now we're looking like we've made tops in the market might be coming in. So if you look at like the last one month, you'll see we were going higher and higher and higher, reached the top at about 20, almost 27,000. And now we're back down to 24,000. And just looking at the last month, it looks like we've entered downward trend and the market might sell off. And there's a lot to understanding the markets, what to buy and sell. Obviously, you could go short, you could go long and I'll just show this picture here. People are still seeing my Facebook here. I got my myself with Robert Schiller, famous Yale professor from the Case Schiller Index. He's actually from Detroit. Robert Schiller came to the Ross School of Business. I've met a lot of business people. I'm pretty connected in the business world. I love finance. I like trading. I trade oil futures. I've traded NASDAQ. I've traded a whole bunch of things. And I wanted to talk a little bit about that. In the recent streams, we've been talking about kind of like the JQ and the history and the role that Jews have played in finance, even going back to history, historical biblical times, the creation of usury. And I've mentioned commonly, what's the connection between the Jews in Europe and the connection between the Jewish and the European peoples? Is that the Jews were largely responsible for creating the markets in Europe, that the markets were largely created in Europe. And Jews were the main force behind that, whether it was the first futures market, even the first insurance markets going in Italy back about 800 years with Fibonacci to the Dutch East India Company and the futures markets to the insurance markets in London. So people who know like conspiracy theory, I've mentioned it offhand. I've mentioned, you know, this famous book, The Creature of Jekyll Island, which is probably one of the most popular conspiracy books ever written. This doesn't really touch on the JQ, although there's other ones that go further into history. You know, a lot of people will talk about Rockefeller as a Rothschild agent. And I have, you know, Niall Ferguson became pretty popular, actually in the alt-right recently. He had written a book on the history of the Rothschild family. And he actually was friends with the descendants of the Rothschild and archives and records and was able to dig into their archives, you know, two volumes, two huge books. And any of you who are Niall Ferguson's fans may have seen his book, The Ascent of Money, which is like a history of money from ancient times till today. And if you looked at E. Michael Jones, who was you're talking about the history of usury or the Jewish revolutionary spirit touches upon the role that Jews have played in important historical events like the Spain to the Cromwell and his connection with bankers and Charles the First and these different important events in history. Who are the bankers? Who lent who money? And so on and so on. So it was always interesting to me as a Jew, but also just obviously as money. I read this book years ago, The Origins of Value, when it goes historically through the different parts in ancient history till today into the creation of our modern financial system. And in terms of cabal and Judaism, I've talked a lot about the connection between cabala in modern finance, specifically the Arezol's cabala and the system of what you could term trickle-down spirituality. That the Arezol actually had a very wealthy uncle, you know, in the Spas when the Jews after the Spanish expulsion and back up in Spas. That the Arezol had a wealthy uncle who supposedly had his own island off Egypt. And he had spent time with his uncle before moving to Israel. And, you know, he knew a lot about business and possibly had had family money to look at this kind of like trickle-down spirituality, basically the question that the Arezol's basing his cabala on of God is all good and all benevolent and has all the power in the storage houses of heaven. But if he gave it to us all at once, it would crush us. So he has this somewhat trickle-down system of expansions and contractions that allow, you know, God's infinite light to be contracted to a point where it doesn't overwhelm us. And, you know, the theory of the shattering of the vessels and so on and so on. Hopefully, we'll have time to talk more about that. But the direct connection of that to the creation of markets is this idea of credit and storage, the idea that you have a collection house of your good deeds added up and your bad deeds. And there's some divine system for how that interplays into the effect of day-to-day life, which led to the creation of markets and the system of credit and investors and, you know, stock ownership that we know of today. And it's a long history and development. And I would like to trace through the origins, not only, you know, the historical things that everyone knows about when they go to school, but also the origin of these ideas like the capitalist, their teachers, you know, Shabbatite Spie, how these movements were created in Israel and different traveling rabbis brought them to the parts of the world where the markets were created, like the Dutch East India Company, could directly show the connections between some of the founding members of the Dutch East India Company and the students of the Arezol and also the London insurance markets. And there's actually substantial amount of evidence on these connections. So I would like to talk more about that. Esoteric, I appreciate you watching historicity. No, I'm not, I mean, I'm a Jew. I'm happy with my Judaism. I believe in Hashem. Like, I understand antisemitism and these crowds and what they think on the subject. And it doesn't bother me, you know, because the system of cabala, so to say, makes sense that we have direct opposition. I would get into more channels. I used to watch this guy, Endless Mountain. And he had a very good YouTube page. I used to watch him a long time, technical analysis. And he was a big fan of gold. Let me see if his YouTube channel. I don't have the same software he does, but he, he had these very good charts and moving averages and predicting prices. And if you wanted to discuss specific stocks or different things, we could do that. And, you know, I started like basic, you know, just show some books here off my shelf. Suzy Orman, who's actually from Windsor, Canada, Jewish girl, who, you know, became pretty popular, Basic Financial Advice to you know, maybe like graduate level books and theoretical investment banking, differential equations. Like I said, I showed you a picture of me and Robert Schiller. And Robert Schiller, obviously, is one of the most famous economists in the world. And you talks a lot about differential equations. And there's a lot of conspiracy books. I had this one, like in the History of Central Banking and the enslavement of mankind, talks about how these are probably more type books that people in these circles would read. I pulled a few out. This one I'm not finished reading. You're like Web of Debt, The Shocking Truth About How Our Money System and How We Can Break Free, Fever Can Buy a Woman, The True Story of the Bilderberg Group. And you can see how there's these groups of billionaires and powerful people that get together and influence the events in our world. But I want to talk about just strategy. If someone had a small amount of money and wanted to start investing and was interested in what's called day trading, that's specifically what I was very good at. And it involves a certain amount of something called technical analysis. So I'm sorry, you gotta get my mindset to just monologues. I'm going to get into, I prepared PowerPoints and slides. So let me read the chat. If anyone has any questions, I'm just going to go into this concept about technical analysis. So it used to be that you could, now the rules are you could only make three trades a week. And you need a minimum of $25,000. They change the federal law. When I first started in the year 2001 day trading, I had a friend from Israel who had made a substantial amount of money. And so I'll pop that Yahoo Finance back up and show the NASDAQ. But your friend that I'd studied with in Israel, and he hadn't had that much money. He came from relatively a wealthy family, but I mean, upper middle class, maybe wealthy family. But he had saved his money, started day trading in this your range here. So if you see you know, the NASDAQ here, we're talking about like 1998. And then it, you know, zooms to the huge amounts and falls back down. You know, so he was trading in this range about this time here. And he made hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then he started sponsoring other people to trade. And I was one of them. And I traded on his money and we had an agreement and it ended up working quite well. And I worked for other people. I worked for many different people. But, you know, this was when the market was ripping, when electronic trading first started. And they were still on like the 16th systems. Anyone trades now, you know, the prices aren't pennies, but they used to be in sixteenths, if people remember that. And I traded mostly in this down region through this rut. And, you know, now the markets are going crazy. And there's actually a lot of money to be to be made. People are trading. If you look at this trend, you know, we're going to, that's what I'm going to try to teach people through the streaming is how to read these charts and make intelligent decisions just based on the chart. And it's related to a lot of the way I see the world, like a differential equation, momentum, just looking at the momentum of things. There's fundamental analysis also, which is very important, looking at the financial statements. And we could get into that also. But you could make quite a bit of determinants from that chart. So I traded most, I was very successful largely in this region when stocks were going down through 9/11 and traded a few years past that and wasn't as successful. And then later, after I finished university, I traded oil futures. And I don't trade so much anymore. And it's interesting because you know, the cabalists forums talk about how business people can't really understand spirituality, especially the Lubavitch Rebbe has all these books on prayer and advanced meditation. And then he has like simpler meditation for businessmen. And he has these extreme details on why it's difficult to understand spirituality if you're involved in the business world, because it weighs down on you, as opposed to a person who has their business constantly has that weighing on their mind. Even just the person who just has money in the bank and stocks, you know, always looking at them. When I was trading, I felt the markets intensely, always talked about it, you're looking at the company, trying to predict the future, and it weighs down. So I largely, I want to understand Hashem's spirituality. So I took a more renunciative approach where I didn't really desire to build up wealth. My more desire was to understand how things work. And actually, I think at this point, I probably understand the market better than a lot of people who actually trade in the market. And as I said, when I was successful trading the market, I knew very little about it. It was more just a mathematical game to me where I was able to, you know, so to say, beat the market and make real money without really understanding what I was doing just by being quick with numbers. In fact, after I finished university and got a job based on Chicago trading oil futures, that was also largely based on just being very good with mathematics. I didn't even study business. I was in a different field. And they gave me like an intelligent math test. And just based on my results in the math test, they were ready to go ahead with interviews. But I didn't want to relocate to Chicago. So I didn't go down that route. So I found, so I guess, you know, read the chat, I'm going to enter screen share and, you know, just jump right into explaining some of this stuff for the people who are interested in this wisdom of, you know, what is day trading? How, what is technical analysis? And there'll be some parts that are very easy that really anyone could understand. And some parts are actually highly mathematical and you need advanced mathematics to understand it. You know, thinking the JQ, which are most popular in these circles for now, these days, I worked at firms that were largely 100% Jewish. Some of them were even 100% Orthodox Jewish. We had kosher food. We stopped in the middle of the day for prayers. We had rabbis coming and giving Torah lectures at the office. And so, you know, hopefully in the future, we'll touch more on, you know, maybe EMJ will talk about usury. And I actually have some of those books and the history Hoffman's book. And it's interesting to look at that. But, you know, let's just jump right in and look at this concept of what technical analysis is. I found this like 200-page booklet. I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but it has a lot of these basic charting patterns. So let me just start reading. And then I got some PowerPoints that should be useful. So in finance, technical analysis is the security analysis discipline for forecasting the direction of prices through the study of past market data, primary price and value and behavior, economics and quantitative analysis incorporate substantial aspects of technical analysis, which being an aspect of active management stands in contradiction to much of modern portfolio theory. According to the weak form efficient market hypothesis, such forecasting methods are valueless since prices follow a random walk or otherwise essentially predictable. The efficient market hypothesis is obviously very famous. We could discuss that more if anyone in the chat knows about that. The history, the principles of technical analysis derive from the observation of financial markets over hundreds of years. The oldest known hints of technical analysis appear in Joseph de Vega's accounts of the Dutch markets in the 17th century. Joseph de Vega, Jew, one of the founding partners of the Dutch East India Company, hopefully we'll have time to talk about him more. In Asia, the oldest example of technical analysis thought to be method developed by Homer Manahimsa during the 18th century, which evolved into the use of candlestick techniques and is today a main charting tool in the 20s and 30s. Schaubacher published several books which continued the work of the Dow and William Peter Hamilton, his book, Stock Market Theory and Practice and Technical Market Analysis. And at the end of his life, he was joined by his brother-in-law, Robert Edwards, who finished his last book in 1948. Edwards and John Maggi published Technical Analysis of Stock Trends, which is widely considered to be one of the seminal works of the discipline, is exclusively concerned with trend analysis and chart patterns and remains in use to the present and is now in the ninth edition. It is obvious, early technical analysis was almost exclusively the analysis of charts because the processing power of computers was not available for statistical analysis. Charles Dow reportedly originated a form of chart analysis used by technicians, point and figure analysis. Dow theory is based on the collected writings of Dow Jones co-founder and editor Charles Dow and inspired the use of the development of modern technical analysis from the end of the 19th century. Other pioneers of the analysis techniques include Ralph Elliott, Gan, Wykoff, who developed their retrospective techniques in the early 20th century. Many more technical tools and theories have been developed and enhanced in recent decades with an increasing emphasis on computer-assisted techniques. So while fundamental analysis examine earnings, dividends, new products, research and the like, technical analysis examine what investors fear or think about those developments and whether or not investors have the wherewithal to back up their opinions. These two concepts are called psychology and supply and demand. Technicians employ many techniques, one of which is the use of charts. Using charts, technical analysis seek to identify price patterns and market trends in financial markets and attempt to exploit those patterns. Technicians use various methods and tools. The study of price charts is but one. Supply and demand indicators monitor investors' liquidity, margin lengths, levels, short interest, cash and brokerage accounts, in attempt to determine whether they have any money left. Other indicators monitor the state of psych. Are investors bullish or bearish? Are they willing to spend money to back up their beliefs? A spent-out bull cannot move the market higher. And a well-heeled bear won't. Investors need to know which they are facing. And the end stock prices are only what the investors think, therefore determining what they think is every bit as critical as an earnings estimate. Technicians using charts search for archetypal price chart patterns such as the well-known head and shoulders or double top bottom reversal patterns, study technical indicators, moving averages, and look for forms such as lines of support, resistance, channels, and more obscure formations such as flags, balance, days, and cup and handle patterns. Technical analysis also widely used market indicators of many sorts, some of which are mathematical transformations of price, often including up and down volume, advanced decline data and other inputs. These indicators are used to help assess whether an asset is trending and if it is, its probability of its direction and continuation. Technicians also look for relationships between price-volume indices and market indicators. Examples include the Relative Strength Index, the MACD. Other avenues of study include correlation between prices and options, implied volatility, put-call ratios with price. Also important are sentiment indicators such as put-call ratios, bull-bear ratio, short interest and implied volatility. There are many techniques in technical analysis. Adherence of different techniques may ignore the other approaches, yet many traders combine elements of more than one technique. Some technical analysis use subjective judgment to decide which patterns a particular instrument reflects at a given time and what the interpretation of the pattern should be. Others employ a strictly mechanical and systematic approach to pattern identification and interpretation. Technical analysis is frequently contrasted with fundamental analysis, the study of economic factors that influence the way investors price financial markets. Technical analysis holds that prices already reflect all such trends before investors are aware of them. Uncovering these trends is what technical indicators are designed to do. Imperfect as they might be, fundamental indicators are subject to the same limitations naturally. Some traders use technical or fundamental analysis exclusively, while others use both types to make trading decisions, which conceivably is the most rational approach. Users of technical analysis are often called technicians or market technicians. Some prefer the term technical market analysis or simply market analysis. An older term, chartist, is sometimes used, but as the discipline is expanded and modernized, the use of the term chartist has become less popular. It is only one aspect of technical analysis. Technical analysis employs models and trading rules based on price and volume transformation, such as the Relative Strength Index, moving averages, regression, intermarket and intra-market price correlation cycles, or classically through recognition of chart patterns. Technical analysis stands in contrast to the fundamental analysis approach to security and stock analysis. Technical analysis analyzes price, volume and other market information, where its fundamental analysis looks at actual effects of the company, market, currency or commodity. Most large brokerage trading groups or financial institutions will typically have both a technical analysis and fundamental analysis team. Technical analysis is widely used among traders and financial professionals and is very actively used by active day traders, market makers and pit traders. In the 60s and 70s, it was widely dismissed by academics. Recent review, Erwin Park, reported that 56 out of 95 modern studies found to produce as positive results, but noted that many of the positive results were rendered dubious by issues such as data snooping, so that the evidence in support of technical analysis was inconclusive. It is still considered by many academics to be pseudoscience. Academics such as Fama say, evidence for technical analysis is sparse and inconsistent with the weak form of the efficient market hypothesis. User hold that even technical analysis cannot predict the future. It helps to identify trading opportunities in the foreign exchange markets. Its use may be more widespread than fundamental analysis. This does not mean technical analysis is more applicable to foreign markets, but the technical analysis is more recognized as to its efficacy there than elsewhere. While some isolated studies have indicated that technical trading rules might lead to consistent returns in the period of prior to 1987, most academic work is focused on the nature of the anomalous position of the foreign exchange market. It is speculated that the anomaly is due to central bank intervention, which obviously technical analysis is not designed to predict. Recent research suggests that combining various trading signals into a combined signal approach may also be able to increase profitability and reduce dependence on any single rule. It's the principles. Okay, hope I didn't lose everybody. I'm gonna, yeah, I'm keep on reading. I have some slide shows I'm going to show. And basically, this is going to be a lesson in pattern, your recognition. So I know this can be hard for a lot of people to see unless they're familiar with it. So if they are familiar with it, a lot of it's going to be review. If they're not familiar with it, a lot of it might be over their head and complicated for them. But for those who have a mathematical bend or pattern recognition vent, most of this, we're going to be looking at charts and just looking at simple patterns and charts. So you should be a lot of fun, but I just want to get these economic precursors, you know, down, the fundamental precursors down so that your people will be able to you'll see the financial power of these ideas. And so I can enter back slide share and I'll pop in a few PowerPoints, you know, just so we could start seeing some charts right away. So people who don't know what I'm talking about will instantly be able to, you'll start seeing what some of these patterns mean. Okay, so here I found from an economics course, technical analysis. Sorry, just make sure, make sure I'm working here. Okay, so let's do it. Technical analysis. Well, let's see, basics and definitions, charts, types, moving averages, trends, channels, support and resistance in volume, some of the basics. So it's basic technical analysis, stock, really the whole markets come down to supply and demand. You know, people who know basic economics, when supply is greater than the demand, prices go down. And when demand is greater than the supply, prices move up. And, you know, to some extent, that's all there is to it. And some people also, they said the psychological, it's basically hope and fear. So you were look at the charts, we're going to see things like volatility, fluctuations, highs and lows, ranges, opening and closing prices. Hopefully, a lot of you know what those are. You know, so here's a typical stock price that you might look at. And it's basically a map of performance. You know, the most efficient way to look at the data, the mathematical data of price history is through a chart. And the information could be expressed most clearly in a chart. And many times the chart is just, you know, says an investment roadmap, the correct trade is obvious from just looking at the chart. So we've got line charts, bar charts, you know, the bar charts that show the closing price and the daily high and low. Hopefully, people are familiar with that, you know, red meaning down and blue or black being up. You know, candlestick charts. It's like any other chart, it has a time scale. And usually on the Y coordinate is the price and the X coordinate will be the time. So we're moving up and down, you know, you see on the side is the price. And going across on the bottom is the time scale. And sometimes the bars on the bottom will be volume. And so that when you look like Yahoo Finance, anything, you could change the time of the chart from a daily chart to weekly, monthly, and those will give different information. So if you're day trading and just looking to make a quick momentum trade, you're usually looking at the daily trade, a daily chart. If you're looking at longer-term trades, you want to look at longer-term trends. Your volume will play an importance, less important than price, but volume is also obviously important because your price might be moving, but how many shares are being traded. And that's usually shown at the bottom with the bar charts that represent the number of shares traded. A general rule, I started trading, I'm still friends with LinkedIn, a guy, Dave Shine. We use this book called The Electronic Day Trader, which was written by a former business partner of the person I worked for. And it was pretty popular when it came out. I think that later became Tradescape. It was like Broadway and Andover and Tradescape, these first day trading companies that came out. And some of these people made tens of millions of dollars, even went up to make hundreds of millions of dollars. And there was a book 15 years ago called The Electronic Day Trader. And even my boss had what he called like the I Bible, which is just like 10 rules to day trading. You know, generally, the trend is your friend. You don't want to fight the trend. You want to follow the trend. You know, so here, you know, pretty obvious uptrend. Here, it's hard to make out the Here it's hard to make out the trend, you know, up and down, a lot of volatility. You know, you'd even draw in trend lines or special software to draw in trend lines where you see like, you know, what we'll talk about later, higher highs and higher lows. Clear uptrend and changing in trends, picking out bottoms and tops. And it's very cool if you know, people who enjoy my commentary are probably more mathematical pattern recognition minds and. To some extent, trading stocks is the pinnacle of proving your ability of pattern recognition. You know, here we look at a channel, two parallel trend lines that act as an area of support and resistance. Where you see higher highs and lower lows. So it doesn't just move straight up, it moves up and then down, up and down. But it moves up more than it moves down. So you have higher highs and higher lows over a long-term trend. And then you could be a break in the channel, reverse in trend. And these are some of your basics for how to trade, how to get into trade, when to get into trades. You know, look at concepts such as support and resistance where you have. Support levels. So here's an old chart from Amazon. This is many years old. Obviously you look at Amazon trading in sixty, but you'll see every time it goes higher than it goes lower, it has the support level around sixty dollars. And it can't break under the support level. And this will be extremely important because largely trading are are what are called your profit-loss analysis, risk-reward analysis. Where you're looking at, if you're right, what can you gain? And if you're wrong, what can you lose? So if you purchase a stock right above the trend line and it goes against you, you have very small risks. So if you purchase it just there at sixty, you say if it goes under sixty, you're going to sell and take your loss. You you might only be risking a dollar or two as where it goes up, you could make substantial amounts of money. So in order to have high risk reward trades, you have to be able to find these support and resistance points. You know, so here. You're saying, okay, you had the support if you bought it, but when it breaks under, you should sell because if it breaks its support. It could go down quite a bit. So if you're looking at like, okay, you bought it at seventeen and a half here and you're hoping it goes higher. If it goes under seventeen, you're going to sell because once it breaks its support level, it could go down quite a bit. So you know, we're gonna look more in detail, but you know, just I want to put some charts right in front of people. This was the most basic of the powerpoints I could find. I encourage people to, you know, look more into I posted the link of the page you hear. So on a day trading here, you have both support and resistance on this chart for a long period of time. Like here at fifty-six doesn't appear to go under and at sixty can't go over. So you could have a strategy of trading when it hits fifty-six, you buy. And when it hits sixty, you sell in short and keep on trading back and forth until it breaks one way or the other. And if it breaks higher, you buy. And if it breaks lower, you short it, you know, it's pretty basic strategy. You know, this concept of support and resistance is probably the most important concept to understand for technical analysis. And you know, breakout. So you look at when it breaks here. So it broke higher, it was in this trend here. Where it was in this range between one fifteen, one twenty-five. And then when it broke higher, it went, you know, up in a new upward trend. And you know, so this is very important to understand. Moving average is also interesting where moving average is just, you're taking the last fifty, two hundred, ten day, whatever average. And what was the average price over that period of time? So obviously like here in November, the price went way down. So the price is trading it as much lower than the moving average or when it goes up. And you'll see that there's some factors in technical analysis that are based on different moving averages. And here you could see the moving average in line with the trading and that could help you to find different support and resistance or buying sell points. And actually the mathematics gets quite intense. We'll talk about Fibonacci series. And really the best analysis actually all uses differential equations. You know, here's just a very simple trend. You look at the beginning for a long period of time. It's just even in, you know, in a trend where it can't break under its support or higher than the resistance. And then it breaks higher and goes higher for a long period of time till it makes a peak and then goes down. And we'll also look at the complications of finding highs and lows and reversal of patterns. And those are quite fun looking at those stock patterns. Looking at these charts if you're mathematically minded like me. And here also, when you're looking at higher highs and lower lows, looking at the twenty and fifty day moving averages to show the lower support level. So you know, it's moving up higher highs and higher lows. But the lower lows are usually in line with the moving average and you know, we'll talk about this more. And you know, this might lead into more interesting things where we could actually talk about investment. I'd consider opening up hedge funds and you know, like people might be watching this, not from my debating streams, but people who actually know me. Or people who've talked to me about, you know, opening up a hedge fund or trading. In fact, as people till today still try to put money in front of me in order to help them trade. And the people who respect me the most, in my opinion, the most is usually regarding these matters. And actually, there's quite a few people that in real life. I give investment advice to. Okay, so it's basic overview. Let me see. Eight people here. Yeah, I like, so I'm just reading the chat real quick. So I like. You know, commentators like Peter Schiff, they're interesting, although I'm just trying to teach a skill. So anybody watching this right now who has money to invest could benefit from this. And you know, Peter Schiff, and there's different skills in market analysis, but you just want to, you like, give me a stock, for example. I don't know if anyone's here is trading and you wants to give me a stock and we could do a quick analysis of the technical analysis for the trading and price pattern. So this is just a useful skill to investors saying, you want to trade, you want to be an investor. Technical analysis is extremely important and basically any, you know, like unfortunately, like Bernie Sanders says, fifty percent of Americans facing retirement have zero savings. But fifty percent of Americans facing retirement do have savings. A lot of people, probably a lot of people watching me are more likely to to have retirement savings, to have. Investment accounts, to have portfolios, to have like their 401ks or their Roth IRA or whatever, and to actively invest the money. And this is extremely important. This will make a difference, even if you use mutual funds, this will make a difference in your savings and your investments. So. Yeah, so let's look at, I'm going to get more into. Let's look at Amazon on Yahoo finance, just to show an example practically of, you know, what's going on. So here. Is. You know, so we were looking on that chart back like Amazon in like two thousand and ten when it was trading at sixty. Now Amazon went to two thousand and. You know, if we just look in the last. Year to date, you say like, let's look at five years, Amazon has basically been on up and up. You know, it's had a little down, down marks like in two thousand and fifteen came down almost thirty percent from its high. But basically it's been making higher highs until in the last few years, it really went up. And obviously Jeff Bezos is the richest guy in the world, but it's down almost twenty-five percent from its peak. And we'll see here, this is like a double top, like head and shoulders type. Reverse head and shoulders pattern or whatever. We'll discuss what happened here, how you could have, you know, seen that Amazon might be at its top. And if you're looking, you're right now, you're trading, you're looking at the trade on the trend on Amazon is just lower and lower. So just on a technical analysis, it's probably a good short, you know, like on a one day. There's a lot of money to be made. Like I say, you could trade any one of these trades. And when I day traded, I bought then shorted and bought then usually want to, you know, the trend is your friend. If the market is strong or the stock is strong, you want to be long. If the market's weak, you want to be short, but on days where it's just trending, any of the example, you could have bought here, shorted, sold and short here, bought back. And you know, back and forth and made, but if you're looking for the trend like, okay, so it's in this little fifteen hundred range right now. So if you look, let's see. You know, so five days, Amazon's been coming down and down and down. And. Let's say there's some support at this fifteen hundred level. So you're not sure whether Amazon is going to find support at fifteen hundred and bounce back up. And or it's going to continue down. So you want to find support levels. And you want your risk reward calculation is best when you trade as close as possible to the support and resistance level. So if you have support right here about fifteen hundred and you're thinking, okay, I'm going to go long. And if it doesn't break fifteen, if it breaks fifteen hundred, you're going to take a small loss very quickly. And if it doesn't break fifteen hundred, it might bounce up, you know, ten, twenty percent. So those are your typical high risk reward pattern trades. And you know, it actually is much more intense than that, but you're just a quick. Showing of the value of this information, just looking at Amazon. Yeah, so Oliver, I'm focusing just on technical analysis today, so we will be talking about. Fundamental analysis, hopefully as we go on, or if people did actually want to talk about stocks. Or you know, maybe even I've considered many times actually opening and operating a hedge fund. But you know, generally I've been more focused on spiritual things and focusing on finance detracts from your ability to, you know, focus on intellectual things. But you know, if we did have, you know, like a more stock directed thing, we will look at technical and fundamental analysis like I was mentioning. So let's do one more slideshow. So here. International finance, you know, another introduction to technical analysis. A lot of this is quite mathematical, so I'm going to skip most of the mathematics. Although if there is an audience that understands mathematics, we could come back and look at the more advanced. And actually, technical analysis could include quite a bit of differential equations and computer programming and simulations, and that is actually highly mathematical. So technical analysis is not concerned with the causes of market movements and said technical analysis focuses on the movements themselves. Is there information in past price movements that can be used to predict future movements? So you have chart analysis and quantitative method. So obviously the first thing you need to do is a time series plot of the price versus time. Charts can be hourly, daily, weekly, yearly, they can include the whole history. You just fool around with Yahoo finance and there's more expensive charting software. If any of you do actively trade and have like an account with like E-Trade or. Your whatever trading software you use, they might have much better charting software. And there's actually paid charting companies like Bloomberg. You know, that you pay for actual better information. It's like we said previously, the main thing we're looking to decipher from the chart is resistance and support. Your resistance are upper bounds and support are lower bounds. And sometimes what used to be your old support could become your future resistance. You know, said that, you know, breaks under this level and then finds support at a lower level. And then when it might try to break back higher, the previous support level might be a resistance level. And. You're looking for parallel lines and chart patterns where here you have lower lows and lower highs. So when it's moving up, it goes, you know, like on a daily basis, it doesn't just move straight up, it goes up and down, up and down, up and down. But the trend will be, it moves, it's always moving higher. So the highs keep on getting higher and the lows keep on getting lower. And when it goes down. You'll have a reversal. And you know, so drawing these lines or at least thinking of them in your head is very useful. Yeah, so here's a basic uptrend. And here's a breaking a trend. So you know, obviously you're long would be beneficial, but when it breaks the trend, it go up even higher at a faster rate. Certain triangle patterns, we'll talk more about these flag patterns, head and shoulder patterns, a lot of different methods for determining breaking of support. Like you're like here, the triangle pattern of testing the support level where it came to the support from a higher level, lower, lower, forming a picture of a flag. Which is indication that it's going to break the support, break the support level and go lower. You know, the higher level, you know, the ascending triangle. You would talk about reversals, how to recognize reversal points, you know, like here it was an uptrend and then switched to a downtrend. And there's certain, you know, here we call the bump and run reversal where it has. Breaks its normal upward pattern, has a sharp upward boost and then all of a sudden breaks lower. You know, the head and shoulders reversal is like called like the double peak basically. Where you have a lower peak, a higher peak, and then a lower peak before the reversal of trend. So you'll see that very common, you know, like double peak, multiple peak, head and shoulder patterns, upside down head and shoulders. So right now the Dow Jones. Could be in a head and shoulders reversal pattern. And as I like, a lot of these charts will have multiple of these factors at the same time. So if people know Fibonacci, the Fibonacci numbers, one, one, two, three, five, eight, thirteen, twenty-one. Arthur Benjamin, Jewish mathematician, people see my Twitter, he came played back in a tournament here. He used to joke, you know, one, two, three, five, eight, who do we appreciate Fibonacci? But Fibonacci, you know, it's seen in nature with the number like petals. Here's a nice example with the pineapple and you see like this, you know, one, two, three, five, eight, thirteen, twenty-one. And you know, so if you count. The shapes on a pineapple, you see the Fibonacci sequence and like sunflower seeds and all these different things. Like the distance for the fingers and the golden ratio. And you know, I assume most of you've probably heard of Fibonacci. But it also will relate to trend and trend reversals that charting will sometimes follow the Fibonacci patterns. And we might talk more about this. If you look at like the different Fibonacci numbers and the trends is very interesting. And you know, we might get into more mathematics, but you know, Fibonacci is pretty basic mathematics. We're talking differential equations. Then we talk about Elliott waves is another theory of. Another theory for how to conduct a technical analysis. Consisting of five moves impulses, one, three, five and two and four corrective. So you have like your up, down, up, down, up reversal pattern, we call Elliott waves. No, I mean, so a lot of this is pretty mathematical. So this, for this stream, I want to focus more just on something that doesn't require advanced mathematics. Someone who just has your basic geometry and algebra would be able to understand in seeing the patterns on the charts. So moving average convergence and divergence, the MACD indicator calculates the difference between moving averages. Two different lengths, usually twelve periods and twenty-six periods, signals typically a nine period moving average of the difference. The difference means that something is happening that gives a seller buy signal. You're just ways to be able to predict the reversal of trend. So you know, technical analysis is purely based on the history of. What has happened before and just predicting the future based on the pattern of the past. I don't know if Judas, I'm happy to have anybody on, but I want to talk, you know, basically cover the issue I'm talking about. So if you have something to add to this discussion of technical analysis, I'll have someone on, but otherwise I'm going to finish what I'm talking about. And. And then, you know, we could talk about different things. So let's read a little bit more from this. Technicians say that market price reflects all relevant information, so their analysis looks at the history of a securities trading pattern. Rather than the external drivers such as economic, fundamental and news events, price actions also tends to repeat itself because investors collectively tend towards pattern behavior. Hence technicians focus on identical trends and patterns. Based on the premise that all relevant information is already reflected by prices, technical analysis believe it is important to understand what investors think of that information known and perceived. Studies such as Cutler, Katerba and Summers titled, what moves? Stock prices do not cover this aspect of investing. Prices move and trends, technical analysis believe that prices trend directionally up, down or sideways or some combination. The basic definition of a price trend was originally put forward by Dow theory. Example of a security that had an apparent trend is AOL from November two thousand and one till August two thousand and two. Technical analysis or trend follower recognizing this trend will look for opportunities to sell the security. AOL consistently moved downwards in price. Each time the stock rose, sellers would enter the market and sell the stock. Hence the zigzag movement in price, the series of lower highs and lower lows is telltale sign of a stock in downtrend. In other words, each time the stock moved lower, it fell below its previous relative low price. Each time the stock moved higher, it could not reach the level of its previous relative high price. Note that the sequence of lower lows and lower highs did not begin till August. Then AOL makes a low price that doesn't pierce the relative low set earlier in the month. Later in the same year, the stock. Later in the same year, the stock makes a relative high equal to the most recent relative high. In this, a technician sees strong indication that the downtrend is at least pausing and possibly ending and would likely stop actively selling the stock at this point. History tends to repeat itself. Technical analysis believes that investors collectively repeat the behavior of the investors that preceded them. Everybody wants in on the next Microsoft, the stock ever gets to $50, you know, will buy it. This company's technology will revolutionize its industry, therefore the stock will skyrocket. These are all examples of investor sentiment repeating itself to a technician. The emotions in the market may be irrational, but they exist. Because investor behavior repeats itself so often, technicians believe that recognizable and predictable price patterns will develop on a chart. Technical analysis is not limited to charting, but it also considers price trends. For example, many technicians monitor surveys of investor sentiment. These surveys gauge the attitude of market participants, specifically whether they are bearish or bullish. Technicians use these surveys to help determine whether a trend will continue or if a reversal could develop, they are most likely to anticipate a change when the surveys report extreme investor sentiment. Surveys that show overwhelming bullishness, for example, are evidence that an uptrend may reverse. The premise being that if most investors are bullish, they've already bought the market anticipating higher prices. And because most investors are bullish and invested, one assumes that few buyers remain. There's these more potential sellers than buyers despite the bullish sentiment. This suggests that prices will trend down, an example of contrarian trading. Industry is globally represented by the International Federation of Technical Analysis. So I encourage people to read through, it's in the description. So systemic trading neural networks since the early 1990s, when first practically usable types emerged. Artificial neural networks have rapidly grown in popularity. They are artificial intelligence adaptive software systems that have been inspired by how biological neural networks work. They're used because they can learn to detect complex patterns and data. In mathematical terms, they are universal function approximators, meaning that given the right data and configured correctly, they can capture and model any input-output relationship. This not only removes the need for human interpretation of charts on the series of rules for generating entry-execut signals, but also provides a bridge to fundamental analysis as the variables used in fundamental analysis can be used as input. As A and N's are essentially nonlinear statistic models, their accuracy and prediction capabilities can be both mathematically empirically tested. And various studies offers a claim that neural networks used for generating trading signals given various technical and fundamental inputs have significantly outperformed buy-hold strategies as well as traditional linear technical analysis methods. When combined with rule-based expert systems with the advanced mathematical nature of such adaptive system has kept neural networks from financial analysis mostly within academic research circles. In recent years, more user-friendly neural network software has made the technology more accessible to traders. However, large-scale application is problematic because of the problem of matching the correct neural topology to the market being studied. When I used to day trade, there had been quite a few computer trading that had been picked out that, you know, computers had started trading. So rule-based trading is an approach intended to create trading plans using strict and clear-cut rules unlike some other technical methods in the approach of fundamental analysis. It defines a set of rules that determines all trades leaving minimal discretion. Okay, so I encourage people to read this. Let's look at the efficient market hypothesis is important. Efficient market hypothesis contradicts the basic tenets of technical analysis by stating that past prices cannot be used to profit to be predict future prices. Thus, it holds that technical analysis cannot be effective. Economist Eugene Fama published the seminar paper on the efficient market hypothesis in the journal Finance in 1970. Said, in short, the evidence and supportive efficient market model is extensive and contradictory evidence is sparse. EMH advocates say that prices quickly reflect all relevant information, no method including technical analysis can beat the market. Developments which influence prices occur randomly are unknowable and advanced. Technicians say that EMH ignores the way markets work and that many investors base their expectations on past earnings or track records. For example, because future stock prices can be strongly influenced by investor expectation, technicians claim it only follows the past prices influence future prices. They also point to research in the field of behavioral finance, specifically that people are not rational participants. EMH makes them out to be. Technicians have long said that irrational human behavior influenced stock prices and this behavior leads to predictable outcomes. Offer David Aaronson says that the theory of behavioral finance blends with the practice of technical analysis by considering the impact of emotions, cognitive errors, irrational preferences, and dynamics of group behavior. Behavior finance offers succinct explanations of excess market volatility as well as the excess returns earned by stale information strategies. Cognitive errors may also explain the existence of market inefficiencies that spawn the systematic price movements that allow objective technical analysis methods to work. EMH advocates reply that while individual market participants do not always act rationally or have complete information, their aggregate decisions balance each other, resulting in rational outcome. Optimists who buy the stock and bid the prices higher countered by pessimists who sell the stock, which keeps the price in equilibrium. Likewise, complete information is reflected in the price because all market participants bring their own individual but incomplete knowledge together in the market. The random walk hypothesis may be derived from the weak form efficient market hypothesis, which is based on the assumption that market participants take full account of any information continued in past price movements, but not necessarily other public information. In the book, A Random Walk Down Wall Street, Princeton economist Burton Malkiel said the technical forecasting tools such as pattern analysis ultimately be self-defeating. The problem is that once this regularity is known to market participants, people act in such a way that prevents it from happening in the future. Late 80s, Professor Andrew Lowe and Craig McKinley published a paper which cast doubt on random walk hypothesis. So this is important, I just want to give the intellectual background to this topic. So let's look at some of the concepts and then we're going to get straight into the charts, which should be the most fun. So you have resistance, a price level that may prompt a net increase of selling activity. Support, a price level that may prompt a net increase of buying activity. Breakout, a concept where prices forcibly penetrate an area of prior support or resistance, usually but not always accompanied by an increase in volume. Trending, phenomenon by which a price movement tends to persist in one direction for an extended period of time. Average true range, average daily trading range adjusted for price gaps. So I encourage people to read through these. Your cycle, target times potential change in price action. So obviously we had open high-low closed chart, candlestick chart, line chart, point and figure chart. Overlays are generally superimposed over the main price charts. You know, to show the, these concepts, you know, resistance, support, trend line, sloping line described by at least two peaks or two tros, channel, parallel trend lines. You know, Bollinger bands. Pivot point, drive by calculating the numerical average of a particular currencies or stocks high-low and closing prices. There's a lot of intellectual background to these, so. Support, support level is a price level where the price tends to find support as it is going down. This means the price is more likely to bounce off this level rather than breaking through. However, once the price is past this level by the, an amount exceeding some noise, is likely to continue dropping until it finds another support point. Resistance levels opposite of support level is where the price tends to find resistance that is going up. This means the price is more likely to bounce off this level rather than break through it. However, once the price is past this level by an amount exceeding some noises, likely it will continue rising until it finds another resistance level. Reactive and proactive support and resistance, most traders will be aware of the many types of support and resistant methods used by trader. Proactive support and resistant methods are predictive. They often outline areas where price has not actually been. They are formed based on current price actions that through analysis have been shown to be predictive of future price active action. Proactive support and resistant methods include Elliott wave, Fibonacci, calculated pivots, trend lines and moving averages. VWAP, market profile, reactive support and resistance are the opposite. They form directly as a result of price action or volume behavior include volume profile, price swing, low highs, initial balance, open gaps and OHLC. Both reactive and proactive support and resistance methods have merit and form a staple part of any support and resistance based trading strategy. Identifying support and resistance levels, support and resistance levels can be identified by trend lines. Some traders believe in using pivot point calculations. The more often the supported resistance levels tested, the more significance given to that specific level. If a price breaks past a support level, that support level often becomes a new resistance level. The opposite is true as well. If a price breaks a resistance level, it was often supplying support at that level in the future. Various methods of determining support and resistance exist. A price histogram is useful in showing what a price, a market has spent more relative time. Psychological levels near round numbers often serve as support and resistance. More recently, volatility has been used to calculate potential support and resistance. So simple example of support and resistance. Or preventing it from going lower, resistance preventing it from going higher. So the stock price is moving between support and resistance level. Then a basic investment strategy commonly used by traders to buy a stock at support and sell at resistance. Then short at resistance and cover the short at support as per the following example. So this is where, you know, day trader on a day, this is over a long period of time. But it's every time it reaches the support level, you buy. Every time it reaches the resistance level, you sell and includes going short. And on an inner day basis, you know, you could make hundreds of dollars in a few seconds back and forth. If something's trending between two prices. You know, we'll cover the mathematics, but you, even if you're only making like one percent, even like a fraction of one percent, if you, you know, buy $10,000 worth of stock, one percent is a hundred dollars. You know, so even if it's only one tenth of a percent, if you, you're buying $50,000 worth of stock, one tenth of one percent is $50. And if you could do that multiple times in an hour, that could rapidly add up to thousands of dollars a day, which is what day traders try to do, which is what I did. So when judging entry and exit investment timing, using support and resistance levels and important to choose a chart based on price interval period that aligns with your trading strategy timeframe. Short-term traders tend to use charts based on interval periods such as one minute. With longer-term traders using price charts based on hourly, daily, weekly or monthly interval periods. Typically traders use shorter time interval charts when making final decisions on when to invest, such as the following example based on one week of historical data with price plotted every 15 minutes. So you see the next example is a much shorter timeframe. You can see the higher highs, lower lows. And if you're just looking to buy a price, you know, difference in 10 cents, so if you're investing, you know, buying 100 shares or something, 10 cents is $10. And if you're buying much more than that, so, you know, just like you might by not paying attention to basic technical analysis, you might lose $10 every single trade. And, you know, to some extent, that's how day traders profit is because most people don't pay attention to this thing. So a day trader could pop in and take that cut away from the person who's not paying attention to this. Although computer programs have largely, largely eclipsed this ability of day traders to do it because the computer programs have been able to do the same thing that I used to do, except they do it much quicker and more efficiently. Yeah, so John's talking about computers and it's a big issue because, you know, all these things could be programmed into a computer. And generally, a computer is going to be better than a human as it, the computer is going to be able to make it instantaneous calculation and will produce superior results to you know, what's going on in then in, you know, my head. And even in Detroit, you know, so if I traded, I was in Manhattan and New York. Even though electricity travels at the speed of light from Detroit, if I hit, you know, I used to just hit shift B and it purchased the stock for me. But if I hit that in Detroit and someone else hits that in Manhattan, even the speed of light is pretty quick, but the amount of time it takes for the speed of light to get from Detroit to New York means that the person in New York, if they hit the button at the same time I do, will get the stock quicker than me every time. And so obviously a computer that could make, that's operating in New York and could make these calculations instantaneously much quicker than a human is going to outperform humans, although there is still room for traders in, you know, this field. So I'll interrupt, you know, the reading of that with another slideshow from an Indian man. Technical analysis of the forecasting of future financial price movements based on an examination of past price movements. Technical analysis can help investors anticipate what is likely to happen to prices over time. Technical analysis uses a wide variety of charts that show price over time. Took the Dow theory. These technical analysis, a method of evaluating future security prices and market directions based on statistical analysis of variables such as trading volume, price changes to identify patterns, analysis applied to the price action of the market to develop trading decisions irrespective of fundamental factors. So you have market action, supply and demand, fundamental, political, psychological factors. Prices move in trends, identifying the trends is the key of technical analysis. History repeats itself. So when you recognize these patterns, you could profit from it. Obviously, we talked fundamental is the cause of market movement, supply-demand factor, government intervention. For example, I have the Daniel Yergin books. Anyone knows anything about oil? You know, I trade oil futures and Daniel Yergin wrote these like huge, like 800 books on oil. If you're talking about oil, like global supply and demand. If you really want to understand the global supply and demand of oil, you know, what is the state of all oil production? How much is in the wells? How productive are the wells? How much demand is there around the nation automobiles, all this technology? And you could actually estimate a full calculation of, you know, the world's supply of oil and the world demand of oil. And that's more fundamental as opposed to just looking at the chart and seeing what's happened with the chart and using these ideas that history repeats itself and these patterns occur again and again that you could profit from these patterns, even if you have no greater understanding of why these things are happening, why the price is going up or down. You have no idea about global supply and demand. So obviously, we all know the Dow Jones. So Dow is the name of a man who came up with Dow theories. Then we Elliott wave theory Fibonacci, hopefully we'll talk more about these. Bow, bar chart, candlestick charts, hopefully people understand these. Moving averages, an average of numbers specified in historical time periods from the point on the chart. Moving averages offer an indication of the clear direction and slope of the trend in the market. Two most popular moving averages, simple moving average and exponential moving average. The simple moving average is formed by commuting the average mean price, the security over a specified number of periods. Well, it is possible to create moving averages from open high and low data points. Most moving averages are created using the closing prices. EMA exponential moving average. In order to reduce the lag in simple moving averages, technicians often use exponential moving averages. So you can see the slight difference between the exponential and the moving. And you see the exponential one has a closer match, less of a lag. So we talked about support and resistance, pivot analysis, trend channel supports and resistance. And then you know, more advanced mathematical like Fibonacci, Gann, Bollinger patterns, just continuation reversal. And, you know, some of these are highly mathematical, you know, simple trend, you know, up, up, up. So you're looking at the chart. Anytime here between, you know, January and May, it just keeps on going up. So if you're looking at it, you probably want to buy it. And then after May starts going down and, you know, the trend is your friend. And not all charts are so clear. So more on Fibonacci. Using the actual, sorry, something went wrong here. So that, so using the actual Fibonacci levels to determine support. You have to mathematically calculate where these levels are. There are people and programs that calculate this for you. A lot of paid servers, if you're an active investor and pay for paid advice. A lot of what they do is making these calculations for you. That's the service you pay for. You're Gann theory, I'm not going to talk about all of these, but they're important and, you know, we might talk about these more in the future. If, you know, there's more interest in them. But you need to see some of these charts and you could, to some extent, you don't have to be good with numbers. You could just kind of intuit these things from the charts. So what's happening on the charts is based on mathematics and numbers. But even if you can't understand the mathematics behind it, you could still somewhat intuit that it makes sense what's happening on the chart. We're going to, you know, cover these patterns like double bottoms, double pops, triangles, ascending triangles, descending triangles. The ascending triangles are generally considered bullish. You know, means they're, they're hitting the resistance level. And, you know, so when it hits the resistance and can't go past it, and then it bounces down, then it hits the resistance. But it bounces down even less until, you know, until it eventually is right up there on the resistance point and breaks higher. So that's called ascending flag and you have the. So that's called a sending tr- uh, flag and you have the descending triangle, sometimes called a flag. Uh, different triangles, flags and pennants. Flags and pennants, uh, continuation patterns usually represent only brief pause in dynamic market. Typical scene right after a big, quick move, the market then usually takes off again in the same direction. Both bullish flags are characterized by lower tops and lower bottoms. While the pattern's standing against the trend, but unlike wedges, their trend lines run parallel. Bearish plays comprise the higher tops and higher bottoms. Bear flags have a tendency to slope against the trend. Pennants look very much like symmetric triangles, but pennants are typically smaller in size. So, you know, here's chart of your different, uh, ascending and descending flags to show like the next trend higher, higher than like a, uh, quick, uh, flags. These, these are all interesting and as I hopefully will go on and you may be part of these streamings. We'll be looking at investment in stocks. And as said, like just in terms of understanding current events, the financial aspect is extremely important to it. You know, so understanding that will be important. Hopefully we'll be looking at these quite a bit. So gaps. I mean, these are all interesting. I encourage people to, to look into it. There's a lot of different factors. You know, gaps could be caused by overnight trading or different reasons and, and could, uh, factor in your double top, double bottom, triple top, rounding tops, bottoms. All your obvious when you see them reversal patterns, wedges. So you know, here's basic reversal patterns. Here's your nice head and shoulders on top that shows trend reversal. Um, here's a nice double bottom, stock was moving down, double bottom, reverse head and shoulders moves back up. Here's a triple top before coming down. These are all basic patterns and, and looking at the market today, that was my thought to do the stream. Just looking at the, the market condition now, it looks like we've double topped and maybe even had a head and shoulders pattern. And the market will come in just purely based on technical analysis. So volume and momentum are important. I'm not going to get too much into these. Although, you know, we talk about it more, they will be important, extremely important, uh, and, uh, Elliot wave patterns also very interesting. Hopefully we might cover that more on, uh, but you know, now you're seeing some of these, hopefully, you know, people who hadn't heard of this before and know a little about it. So you heard me talking about it. Now you're seeing examples of these patterns. So if you're used to looking at stock prices and, uh, you know, these graphs, um, you'll hopefully this will start making sense to you and you could see how this would help you profit. I don't mind just putting the link straight in the chat. I guess I'll have to bounce people if they're, um, annoying. But, uh, yeah, I, I'm doing this, you know, someone has a public study session. So I put the link in the chat if someone wants to come on and, uh, I put my earphone in, so I'll be able to hear if someone comes on. I got two more PowerPoints and you'll read through and I don't mind going through more of these, uh, you're just reading this, you know, as a educational, uh, educational, you know, it's a trend line. Trend lines form when you can draw a diagonal line between two or more price pivot points. They are commonly used to judge entry and exit investment timing when trading securities. It could also be referred to as Dutch line as it was first used in Holland, as we talked about with Vega, one of the Jewish founders of the Dutch East India Company. Trend line is bounding line for the price movement of a security support. Trend line is formed when a security price decreases. So we discussed this, you could basically, you know, read this on your own. I put the link in the description or look at these charts, but, but you know, I want to get into, uh, let me find, uh, I, I picked this one up because I had nice, uh, so I might, I, I'd like to go over these Elliot, uh, you know, like the Dow stuff in this, they're very interesting and read through. But, uh, that's in the Fibonacci, but let's just, um, Dow theory, obviously the six tenants. And I don't mind reading through this. I don't know if anyone is interested in me reading through it. But this is the more interesting parts, these, uh, you know, more mathematical, so obviously candlestick and, uh, I'm sorry, I want to get to the different points of, not, not the types of charts, but the different patterns that you could start recognizing. Okay. So here's your charting patterns. So you know, hopefully we'll go through all of these chart patterns, the pattern that is formed within a chart when prices are graphed in stock and commodity markets, trading chart patterns study, play a large role during technical analysis when data is plotted. There's usually a pattern which naturally occurs and repeats over a period of time. Chart patterns are used as either reversal or continuation signal. Some people claim that recognizing chart patterns, they are able to predict future stock prices and profit by this prediction. And others respond by quoting past performance is no guarantee of future results and argue that chart patterns are merely illusions created by people's subconscious. Certain theories of economics hold that if there were a way to predict future stock prices and profit by it, then when enough people use these techniques, they would become ineffective and cease to be profitable. On the other hand, if you can predict what other people will predict the market to do, then you will be um, valuable information to you. So we're going to talk about head and shoulders, trend lines, cup and handle, double pop and bottom, triple pop and triple bottom, broadening top, price channels, web pattern, triangle, flag and pennant patterns and elite patterns. Let me see if, uh, anyone's coming on, the link is in, I'll put the link in the, um, Discord also. If, uh, someone wants to join, so the link is in the Discord and this, so you may, you, people by now have done a lot of these public study sessions. And I don't mind just talking to myself, even if no one's listening, because you know, to some extent, this is my own review. It's interesting seeing here that it's very similar to, uh, speed reading where the experts say speed reading is impossible and doesn't work. Although clearly there are people who, um, can successfully speed read and do successfully speed read, even though skeptics, scientific skeptics say it does, it's impossible. So some, same thing with day trading. That some people reject technical analysis as a, you know, false science. However, there are technical analysis that consistently profit in the market, uh, you know, hedge funds and, uh, most traders do use technical analysis because it gets you better prices and better ins and outs. So I'm not sure if anyone's coming on, so I'm just going to, uh, keep reading. So head and shoulders. Central formation consists of, of a left shoulder, a head and a right shoulder and a line drawn at the neckline. The left shoulder is formed at the end of an extensive move during which volume is noticeably high. After the peak of the left shoulder is formed, there's a subsequent reaction and prices slide down up to a certain extent, which generally occurs on low volume, the prices rally up to form the head with normal or heavy volume. And subsequent reaction downward is accompanied with lesser volume. The right shoulder is formed when prices move up again, but remain below the central peak called the head and fall below, uh, down nearly equal to the first valley between the left shoulder and the head, or at least below the peak of the left shoulder. Volume is lesser in the right shoulder formation compared to the left shoulder and the head formation. A neckline is drawn across the bottoms of the left shoulder, the head and the right shoulder. When prices break through this neckline and keep on falling after forming the right shoulder, it is the ultimate confirmation of the completion of the head and shoulders, top formation. It is quite possible that prices pull back to touch the neckline before continuing their declining trend. So these head and shoulder patterns will actually happen on a daily uh, basis. Um, if you want to come on esoteric, you could come on, I'll just take a break and, you know, we could talk about general investment or investment strategy. Uh, and you might be one of the prime targets for this lecture because you probably, you are the type person that has investments and savings and invests. And, uh, you may not know too much about this, but might prove useful to you. But you know, I could take a short, uh, break from this and we could talk, you're generically related to the topic. So you know, the same pattern of the bottom and, uh, you know, this happens on a daily basis. So even if you're looking, okay, the Dow Jones, did we tap out? Are we on it? Are we going to break lower? Even on a lower pattern for, you know, just, uh, uh, momentum for, you know, swing trading. These, uh, head and shoulders are one of the most common patterns that you'll see. And here it includes the volume. So a lot of people just look at head and shoulders about the volume. Oh, this includes the volume and the volume is an important factor to it. Although if you don't understand volume, which adds another complication factor to it, um, you could still recognize these patterns. So the drawing neckline of the pattern represents a support level and assumption cannot be taken that the head and shoulder formation is complete unless it is broken. And such breakthrough may happen to be on more volume or may not be. The breakthrough should not be observed carelessly. A serious situation can curve such a break is more than three to four percent. When a stock trips through the neckline on small volume, there may be a wave up, although it's not certain. But as observed, the rally normally does not cross the general level of the neckline. And before selling pressure increases, the steep decline occurs and prices tumble with greater value. Also head and showed shoulders are not perfectly shaped. This formation is slightly tilted upward or downward. One shoulder may appear to droop. On many sharp patterns, any one of the two shoulders may appear broader than the other, which is caused by the time involved in formation of the valleys. The neckline may not be perfectly horizontal. It may be ascending or descending. If the neckline is ascending, then only the qualification of the formation lies in the fact that the lowest point of the right shoulder must be noticeably lower than the peak of the left shoulder. Uses as, as a tool, head and shoulders is extremely useful tool after its confirmation to estimate and measure the minimum probable extent of the subsequent move from the neckline. To find the distance of subsequent move, measure the distance from the peak of the head to the neckline, then measure the same distance down from the neckline to the point where prices penetrate to the, the neckline after completion of the right shoulder. This gives minimum objective or how far prices decline after the completion of this top formation. So cup and handle. So if anyone is taking the link and coming on, um, you're just gonna have to break in at, uh, you know, the, the next break. So I even put the link in Brundle's Discord. But, uh, you know, as, as we read through these and then, you know, maybe we'll talk more and we'll look at actual market. You'll notice all these patterns occur a regular basis in the stock trading. And, uh, after the fact of a reversal of trend, usually you could see these patterns because most reversal of trends occur with these patterns. But not every time these patterns occur, is there a reversal of trend? So cup and handle formation is a bullish chart pattern that is defined by a chart where a stock drops in value, then rises back up to the original value, then drops a smaller amount in value and then rises a small amount in value. The trend, a cup and handle formation should follow an increased trend, ideally one that is only a few months old. Older the increased trend, the less likely it is that the cup and handle will be an accurate indicator. In a cup and handle formation, uh, the cup must always precede the handle. The cup should form a rounded bowl shape. Um, did I get some, did someone join?
Yeah, David, can you hear me? That's what Tarek.
Oh, yeah, welcome, welcome to my stream.
Yep. Hey, how you doing?
So you're one of my most loyal listeners, so.
Oh, wow. Thanks.
So.
It's my first time doing a, a live Google stream in general anyways. Kind of new to me.
I know you've told me that you work in like IT, are, are you a, and, and I know you've dropped some super chats. So are you a, a regular trader? Do you have investments in the market?
Well, yeah, no, I, I'm a network administrator for, for a company I work in corporate. And, um, yeah, I've been, I've been following trading price since two thousand eight, when the whole collapse was happening. I started, um, really getting into watching CNBC and following Peter Schiff. And I did make a lot of good trades back then when, uh, you know, the miners, I was in the gold and silver investing. And those shot up like crazy. So it was pretty, uh, pretty good times. Now, uh, now everything's getting killed, um, you know, tech, oil, you know, energy miners. And it's kind of like, um, I keep on just, you know, trying to, to cost dollar average my purchases. But, uh, it's, it's kind of tough now. So I was just wondering what you thought in general about, um, about the markets right now, the way they're acting. And if there's, there's, uh, you know, any way to, to trade on, on the, the crazy volatile market. You know, just wondering your opinion.
Would you ever short or do you only go long?
No, that's, that's the thing is like, I heard you talk about trading futures, um, and I don't do that. I mean, I did, I did get, um, into pre-market trading, so I could buy and sell pre-market in, in after hours. But nothing to do with, with futures. I've been wanting to learn more about that. So, you know, I'm glad I was, uh, able to catch your stream earlier to learn more of the technical stuff.
Well, you mean, you, you, you could short any stock. So generally, if, if what I'm saying is pretty clear, I mean, although, you know, people have said the market is overvalued and overbought and is going to go down for a long time now. And, and you know, as I said, the, the, you know, number one rule of trading usually is the trend is your friend. But if you feel the, the market is at a peak, it doesn't have room to go up. You could just go short, you know, something like.
Yeah, now, now the shorting is, I, I, I mean, I, I hear the word margins. I don't know if that's for like, you know, like extreme, um, shorting or futures betting, where you have to do like margin calls for, for shorting. I'm a little concerned about that if, if you just like, if you short a stock and it goes down, you have to repay the stock at what you originally bought it at. Is it just that simple?
Yeah. I mean, so the concept of shorting is extremely simple and it just means that you sell it, you sell it before you buy it. You know, it's just the opposite. Instead of buying the stock and then selling it, you sell the stock first and buy it.
Well, you're betting on it going down. So if it's a $10 stock and you try to short it, you, you purchase shares at 10. And then when it, when it, uh, goes down, then you sell.
Yeah, the concept is extremely simple. Like if I knew you were in the market for like, let's say, a $25,000 car or something, or, or maybe you want like a sports car. You want a $50,000 car and, uh, you know, I know you're ready to buy and sign. And so I'm like, you know, deal, I sell it to you $50,000, even though I don't own it. And I have, you know, a period of time to deliver it to you. So if I could purchase that object, you know, that car for $40,000 and then give it to you, I just pocketed a clear $10,000. Um, but I have the obligation to sell it to you. So if I sold it to you at the agreed price and then it turns out that I can't get at the price I thought and I have to pay $60,000 for it, I have to take that loss. So I mean, in practical terms, it just means you make money when the price goes down and you lose money when the price goes up. But technically what you're doing.
Pay it back at a higher per share cost.
Yeah. I mean, you're just selling something that you don't have in the expectation. You're looking, you know, the stock's going down and you're going to be able to buy the stock at any time. So you do, you just sell it now and you can't short any stock. So there's a lot of rules, you know, the, the, you can't, they used to have what were called naked shorts, where you could sell something that you didn't own and then they outlawed it. So it means that the brokerage house, so if you're using, you know, like Morgan Stanley or E-Trade or like a huge brokerage house, they have many different investors that have the different stocks. So when you sell it, um, you know, the brokerage house has in storage extra stock. So you, they're, they're, they're lending you the stack in order to allow you to short it. But, uh, you know, generally if you're a trader, um, if you're a day trader, it could be even 50% of your trades will be short. And when I traded, the market was in a downward trend. So it could be even the majority of my trades were short and your average trader, your average trader, every single trade they make is long. Um, but, but as you advanced in trading, your ratio between long and short will slowly change. And, uh, you know, even you might be like 20% short, 80% long. And if you're looking at the market right now, you're like, everything is overbought, everything is overpriced. I don't see anything that looks like a good buy, then you start looking into shorts.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's interesting. That, that's why, um, uh, you know, I've been involved with, uh, the gold and miners is because, you know, I'm more the, it's kind of the long-term outlook of just, uh, the dollar losing value and, uh, global uncertainty. So, you know, like what happened when gold shot up to $1,900 and silver shot up to 45. It's kind of like, you know, I was very aware of it, but I was not on the boat. And now I'm on the boat and it's just, you know, I'm, so I'm making that kind of trade where, you know, I'm loading up on, on those types of investments. So.
You could also short commodities. I mean, you could short gold and oil or any of those.
Yeah, I don't think you want to short oil at, at the moment, but, uh, but yeah, yeah, that's definitely something. And, and also with, with the Roth IRA, you could only put so much in there a year. So I maxed it out. So I'm kind of just, you know, sitting on the sideline, trying to think of what I want to do. If I want to put more into the brokerage account, if it's worth it right now, or I just figure, like I said, um, if I could wait a month or so till, till January comes up, I could put in more money for, for my Roth. And now, did you deal with any, uh, retirement investments? Or did you purely just have a brokerage account that you were just trying to, to count as a income?
Well, I, I traded professionally was purely a trading account. I mean, I've dealt with, you know, retirement and I have a lot of friends, family, you know, people I advise on retirement savings. And generally that you want to be much more conservative with. So you're saying you've maxed out your Roth IRA and your savings, you might have all that in mutual funds or, or even real estate. Uh, you know, real estate is, you know, fact, fact is that over half of millionaires in America are millionaires from real estate. But you know, if you're looking at more aggressive trading outside of your retirement or even an element, you know, or even an element, you know, like you have to talk to a generic financial advisor about diversifying your portfolio where you have, you know, extremely stable investments like mutual funds and government treasuries and some stocks and index funds. And then you might have a certain element to your savings.
And it might be pretty risky. Might, might be more aggressive. Like I've heard about Nissan, the car maker. Their, their CEO is, is being charged with some type of, you know, fraud, financial fraud. So that shot down, you know, about 10% the other day. I bought it down 10%, came back up 5% and sold it. So I made a quick 5% on that. So I've just been getting a lot more active lately in the trading. But, you know, I kind of want to look at your, your, your outlook beyond the technical of like the economy. Cause I know, you know, it seems like you said, you could just follow technicals all day, every day. And it seems like you could make money once you start to master that. But what do you see as far as like the major trend, whether it's, you know, our economy? Or to deal with, you know, the whole world economy with the, the China tariffs and all the Brexit uncertainty. What do you think about that? The bigger picture?
Well, I was talking more technical analysis than fundamental. Yes. You're talking more fundamental analysis and that is a factor and the markets are.
Yeah, like on the macro level.
But the problem is there's nowhere else really to put your money. So you think like China, Japan, all these different countries that are you're Dubai, Arab countries don't really have a place to park their money other than the US markets. So even though the US markets are largely overbought and overpriced, the lack of competition might in, in like a short squeeze, I saw like Tesla, there's like $9 billion in shorts or something like that. There, there's some huge amount of, you know, people are just betting that Tesla going down to such a huge amount that you could have artificial short squeeze that pushes the market higher. So even if the market is.
Right, covering their shorts.
Yeah, because at a certain point you get your margin calls.
Well, if you look at, if you look at like housing, there's a lot of news about housing coming out, how single home sales and startups are, are down a lot. But then if you look up stocks, like they've gotten crushed already, like Toll Brothers stock, they're already probably down 50%. So it's like that, that seems like a good market. I mean, that might go down, you know, 20% more, but I'm kind of, kind of torn between trying to, you know, I guess, once you learn more technical, then it's not as much of a guess to, to make a decision whether you want to get, you know, invest in those, those shorts on these, you know, on the, on the industries you think are going to go down or, you know, do the long-term investment, like I said, for, you know, to try to hedge against the, the. About the dollar, do you have any opinion on, on the dollar strength?
These things are kind, I gave the example of oil, like I have both of those huge books of, you know, Daniel Yergin, who was like the, one of the, happens to be a Jew, but one of the world's biggest experts on oil, where he actually analyses the state of all of the oil reserves in the world and the mining and the governmental policies of the different mines and the different factors that could change the direction of oil. And, you know, it's really beyond human knowledge to know all of this stuff. And so the market in general, there's so many different factors that come into play, you know, like a lot of people get into Israel or something like, you know, why is the market falling? He goes, oh, didn't you see like the war in Israel or something that, that you know, I encourage you to read the stuff, but you know, like generally it's, it's information overload. So technical analysis is something you could make a living as a day trader separate from knowing what's going on. You could be like, when I first started day trading, I almost knew nothing about the market. And it was pure mathematical game, just picking out patterns, but the money was real, you know, like I, I started making money. I got a check. So you, you could add technical analysis into your portfolio and probably help you pick out better prices. So example, if you had bought, like I give the example, when you bought Nissan, you might not have looked at the level so accurately and just got in at some point. But if you had known a little bit of technical analysis, you might have saved tens or even hundreds of dollars picking the price point on your stock. And like me as a day trader, I give the example, you know, I was talking a lot about support and resistance. So let's say there's support at like $60. I mean, let's say $20 in any stock. And it keeps on falling to 20, then it bounces up to like 2050, 2010 and, and back down. So if you're buying the stock, if you buy 100 shares at a thousand shares at $20, that's $20,000. If you buy it at $20, $20.50, that's an extra $500. And even 10 cents, you know, that's an extra $100. So, you know, a day trader like me might be able to just bid it, you know, one cent over $20, bid at 2001, when it doesn't break the, break the support and it bounces up to like 2010 to sell it back. So you might not have thought about it like, oh, you want to buy Nissan, you put in a buy order and you got it like at 2015. And you didn't realize that if you had actually seen the level two and looked at it, you could have saved $100 buying it and $100 selling it. And there's some day trader now likely, you know, like Steve Feldman is mentioning in the chat, that it's actually a computer algorithm that will quickly pocket that money, you know? So not only did you have to pay the brokerage fee, you also lost five to 10 cents on your buy and sell by, and the, you know, I used to be able to profit from that. Now the computer programs have largely taken the ability.
That's what I was going to ask from, it's probably much different from almost 20 years ago to, to now.
Yeah. So I mean, when I first started, we were on the 16th system and you could.
Yeah, yeah, I never knew about that. That was pretty cool that, that it used to be like that.
And the penny, I give a few examples, like I once made like, I once made like well over $10,000 in a day. And I even made a call that like multiple people in the office made thousands of dollars. And it was in a stock called Broadcom, I think it's still around today.
Oh, yeah, I know Broadcom. Oh, yeah.
And this bid, then it was already penny by penny, this bid for 999 came up. And as the price moved up, the 999 moved up penny by penny. And it went up like $4 like that, like, but you could see it was obvious. I mean, you know what a level two is.
Oh, you're talking about, is level two like where you could see the buy, the volume of buying and selling and the charts of it?
Yeah. So, I mean, so if you don't have a level two, you're going to lose, as I said, like.
That information.
A small percent on every single trade that you make. But if.
What were you doing with that stock that was said was moving up a penny up to $4? You, you noticed that it was moving up, but then what, like 15 pennies later? You made, you made the call to, to get in or something?
Yeah. I mean, so people who aren't stock savvy, I mean, just look at it like, if I know you're about to go to the store and buy a whole bunch of, you know, something. So I just purchased it ahead of you and the store sold out. And then you come to me and it's like, oh, by the way, I'm charging you a higher price. So I saw the huge bid of like 999 on the level two. I bought a few thousand shares ahead of it. I made an announcement to everybody in the office. You like check out that bid. The people that were quick enough on their feet to understand what was going on were able to also buy a few thousand shares and make a few thousand dollars. So a dollar on a thousand shares is $1,000 and and the, the number went down. So, you know, it started 999 and when it got down to like 100, you know, sold it to it. So you just figure, oh, this guy has a huge bid order. He's going to cause the price to go at multiple dollars. So buy in front of him. And when you could see on the level two that his, you know, buy, it has decreased, then just sell it back. And that's like your dream scenario as a day trader. Sometimes it's obvious. Sometimes there's actually.
I mean, when his buy increased then, when he bumped up his buy amount, then you turn it around and, and sold it to him, basically?
Well, I mean, because it started at 999 and as the price moved up, it eventually went to zero. And actually it refreshed a few times. It was 999, went to zero and then reappeared a few times. But, but it's almost a, almost a zero risk trade. So I got this sync on the background here that noise, but it was almost a zero risk trade because you, they have this huge support level that keeps on moving up. And you know, generally, when you look at the level two, you see the support level, you could see, oh, there's 20,000 shares for purchase or even like 100,000 shares for purchase at a certain price. So as a day trader, you say, I'm going to buy 1,000 shares a penny ahead of the resistance support. And if the, when that 20,000 shares gets down to 2,000, I'm going to sell it and take the one penny loss. And, you know, that's what's called a high risk reward trade. So you're thinking like, okay, if it, if it breaks the support, I'm going to get out and only lose one penny, or sometimes it might be a few penny. And if it doesn't break the support, it could bounce 10, 50, 10, you know, 5, 10, 20, 50 cents. And that's what you're looking for, extremely high risk reward trades.
So, so wait one second. When you're talking about trying to get in before the person, are you talking about you're trying to get in at the same price? Before the person, like you see the volume trying to get in at that price and you're like, my trade will execute before their trade. And then that's how you get in. Or are you saying you try to get in ahead of them by going, buying it like, you know, one penny above the huge buy, the volume?
Well, I mean, that's just a very simple, simple example. So you're looking at the support and resistance. So when you have the level two, you could pretty much see your risk reward calculation. You say, okay, if I'm wrong and it breaks the support, I'm going to get out immediately and take a strong loss. And if it doesn't break the support, it's likely to at least bounce a little bit, like we were talking about, like the triangle or flag patterns. Or it might, you know, completely break the trend. So the point is, you know, the point is to get very good prices. And you're probably not trained in that. So you might look at Nissan or, or different stacks. You're like, okay, I want to buy, I want to get in on it. But, but how do you get a good price? And even looking, like I was pointing out, like the higher highs and the higher lows, if you could, you, you want to get in on, on, on a higher low. So the stock moves up and then it moves down and then it moves back up. So you want to wait for the dip to purchase your stock price. And, you know, so usually when you purchase a stock, you'll notice that you're down immediately. So if you just buy it through your brokerage house and then you look at the price you got it versus the price that it says it's trading at, it's like you instantly automatically lost like five cents.
Right. If you do, if you do a market order, yeah, you just definitely don't get it exactly.
I'm going to have to do this in about 10 minutes because I have donations that I committed to for tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, I think I'm probably going to have to end my stream in a few minutes because my roommate's going to make a whole bunch of noise, but so I'm not, I'm not going to continue with, with the chart. But if you want to talk another like 10 minutes or something. I mean, you know, generic market, like, you know, definitely. I read Peter Lynch when I was young. I don't have it, the, I don't have it anymore, but he says invest in what you know. You know, generally the best idea is to, you know, because you're not going to, you're not necessarily, you, you may not have any heads up on oil or, you know, automobiles or something like that, but you probably do have an expertise, you know, like you say, you're Broadcom, you're in IT. Maybe you understand software.
Yeah, I did, I did make a huge mistake because yeah, I've been in IT for a long time. And I remember the Nvidia stock and even AMD stock. Nvidia was like 12 bucks a share. AMD was like 250 a share. And I did, I did the whole mining thing, you know, I, I made money off of mining. So all this demand was there and, and I just, it just shot up like crazy, those, those stocks. Same thing with Intel and Microsoft, you know, like I remember five years ago, they're like, like a quarter of the value they are now. So now it's like, kind of as, as you can see, the market's going down. So it's starting to reevaluate what it should be. But, you know, it seems like it has a long way to go still. Uh, but yeah, I made some stupid mistakes with, with stuff I should have known, like those Nvidia, AMD and Microsoft and Intel. But luckily I did end up doing the mining, you know, made money on the mining and, and got out before it crashed. So, so that was pretty good. So I did, did follow with what I knew and I did make money on that. And then now, like I said, I've been following, you know, the precious metals market for about 10 years now. So I'm just, you know, just piling in, pouncing on those miners and I'm hoping what happens, you know, like what happened eight years ago or so, when, you know, like a miner, let's say SVM or, or something, that was like 11, 13 bucks a share. And I would get in at like $2 to $4 a share and, you know, my money. And now those stocks are way back down to the $2, $3 a share. So I'm just trying to, to work my way in there and, you know, because we're, I believe, you know, at a macro level, we're, we're much worse off with all the toxic investments and debt. And if you look at Trump is in, we're such a great economy and Trump is still spending over a trillion dollars a year. So like, like Schiff has said, if it's, if this is a good economy and we're going that much in debt, you know, wait till we get in the recession and the snowball effect is going to hit, you know, so.
Generally, the most risky thing you could do in, in trading is picking tops because your short squeeze, if you consider it be like cryptocurrency, Bitcoin or something like that. You know, like this is obviously a short, this is worthless. Or even like Tesla or something like that. There's like, I think as many as $10 billion that are support, you're short Tesla, people are looking at, at the fundamentals and just like this company is junk. It's got to go down.
Yeah, Elon Musk was making a big deal about that. This is like a month ago. He's like, oh, the people shorting the stock are going to get what's coming to them. And then the thing ended up going up and then it's down again. Yeah, I guess it was pretty heavily shorted, but yeah, he's, they're making money again or something. But, but yeah, I know, I get what you're saying.
Yeah. So generally you want to, I mean, so if you've been investing a while, you start, you're just safe things, index funds, treasury bonds, mutual funds, aggressive mutual funds. And you maybe stuff you follow and then you start with what you know about because you have expertise in the subject and you, you know, you're, I didn't even get into fundamental analysis, but you know, stuff that you have, I mean, A, you should teach yourself and, you know, I didn't even cover any of this, how to read financial statements and look at the fundamental aspects of a company. And, and then your expertise in like technology and markets from something you know about the subject. And you know, then you could branch in, in, you know, generally it's tough to find the next Microsoft. It's tough, but you can make steady good investments. You could improve your price entry points. You can make better risk reward calculations. The best day traders were the people that had the most discipline that, you know, I sat there with my hands on, you know, above the computers, just waiting to hit shift B. And, you know, there are people in my office very disciplined that only made a few trades a day and just, you know, if they didn't get their price, they didn't make the trade and I wasn't so patient.
Yeah, no, I'm not a patient. I'll put in like, like a buy order. And then if it's getting close to it, but not quite hitting, I'll just, I'll just cancel, replace it, put it up a little bit higher, just so I feel better about getting it, you know? Because you always think you're going to miss something, you know? It's tough.
Yeah, I did, I did want to, you know, cover in these streams, the connection, because I'm talking about it a lot, the, you know, the role of Jews and the development of markets in Europe, you know, just the, the history of the Jews in Europe together and especially in the creation of the markets and, and yeah, but, but just to cover like, you know, this is what I did for a while. So I made a living till today, like I'm in construction, but I do financial stuff mostly related to it. And, you know, people who do value my advice, usually this is what we talk about. Because it's important, you know, like your investment, your money, you're very important, useful service. And it's very mathematical, the trend just. I mean, if you're good with numbers, you, but just looking at charts and picking out the trends, even if people aren't very good for numbers, a lot of times you just recognize these patterns.
Yeah. If you follow the same stocks, if you've been looking at the same stocks for a while, then you could definitely pick up on the movements. But the technical part is not knowing the stock and looking at it and, and analyzing whether you should short it or buy it. Because, you know, it's, it's hard. It's like looking at those stocks or the, the charts and you see the, the head and shoulders and everything and, and the dead cat bounces and all those terms and like the, and then, you know, it's hard to really tell like the 200-day moving average, what exactly that means going towards the, the, you know, the pressure of going up or down with stocks. I don't know if you, if you got into that earlier, that's why, you know, I really don't want to jump on because I was really curious about learning this type of technical information.
Yeah, man, that's why I'd like, you know, I'm glad you came on and, and some, my, my housemate's got to make a bunch of noise. I'm going to get off in a minute, but yeah, I mean, I'd like to continue this or maybe even do a series. And I just wanted to, you know, cover this, put it out there. And, you know, there is a certain aspect of people like hating money, people not wanting to get ahead financially. And a lot of time, like you regret, a lot of people regret those decisions because, you know, people retire without good money or, and in these days, unfortunately, trading is expensive. Now, like to be a day trader, they changed the law. You need at least $25,000 or you can only make three trades a week. You could open up an account with just a few hundred dollars and start making trades. And I'd encourage anybody, um, you know, to do that, even if you're young, you know, times here, if he even is like young twenties, you just have a few thousand dollars saved up. You could open up a, an account and make it, make a trade. And, you know, start with what you're familiar of, what you know, and you learn more about it by getting in there and doing it, although it's risky and like certainly day trading, like 90 plus percent of people lose money and the office.
Yeah. They should start off with like mutual funds or ETFs or something a little bit more steady. But yeah, no, that, that's like, you know, that's one of my worst fears is to, to be an old person and have zero. and have zero retirement and have to worry if, if the government social security is there for you. And yeah, there's many people that don't even think like that, like they'll build, barely be able to afford a house. And then yet they'll get like a, a deck built onto their house or they get a pool and barely pay the taxes on, on the property. So there's, there's many things that people, um, you know, spend all their money on and don't even think about the future. So yeah, it's, it's very important to educate people, especially, you know, the, the big fam that listens to, uh, to your streams and the Brundle fine Luke. Cause Luke even said he, he has zero money for his retirement, you know, and he's, um, he's in his mid 50s and, and that's not good. So that's, I don't want that to happen to me.
So, you know, 50% of Americans have zero money coming for their retirement. I mean, real estate is probably, we could talk about real estate investment, but that's probably a superior strategy to stocks is becoming a landlord. Although, you know, stocks is much easier because you don't, you don't even have to know who you're buying and selling from. I think legally you, 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 you're not even entitled to know who you bought and sold from. And it, as opposed to, you know, real estate where you actually have to, uh, be a landlord with real people. And, uh, but yeah, I mean, I, that's why I wanted to put this out there. It's an area of my expertise that occasionally people comment on. And but, you know, generally from the streams I'm doing, it, it probably shows the type of people in the streams that, uh, no one asked me about these subjects. No one cares that much about them. Um, yeah, I could probably make this like a financial channel where I was just doing like stock picks. So that's not my thing. As I mentioned, the Babate Trevi warns in his literature, that businessmen are incapable of understanding complex Kabbalah. You know, even makes that he is like meditative techniques and he has like watered down ones for businessmen because of the strain of, uh, business affairs weighing on the person that they're not capable of putting their mind completely to these complicated subjects.
And I don't think there's anyone on the alt right that, uh, really talks about this at all, you know, like even on Luke's stream.
I mean, unfortunately it's a poor man's movement and from like, it's a dissident movement, revolutionary movement that, uh, you know, saying like, well, you know, the America's about to collapse and the markets are going to fold. Why would I try to invest in it? But when you look in reality, like the markets have been along longer than America, um, you know, like chances are, and, and even investment strategy. When you're, you know, when you have a large amount of money, you diversify and look at your risk portfolio. You're like, well, what happens if the US collapses? And the dollar goes to zero and then you start, uh, you know, looking into role by investments and even in, uh, accounting for those, uh, because of that. But yeah, I wanted to.
Delete it, man. Dude.
I'm saying the unfortunate trolls that, and you're saying like, who's likely to, who's likely to be watching me on YouTube? And it's more likely to be trolls than people honestly interested in what I'm talking about. It's the unfortunate reality. And even it's like, okay, well, I was, you know, a day trading Jew in New York. I worked in offices where everybody was an Orthodox Jew or even lived in towns, you know, where wealthy areas that, that, uh, you know, you, you kind of have the dissidence of the disconnect if you're in Manhattan in the financial fields where you might understand what you're doing and, uh, understand that, you know, people might be anti-capitalist or just question the role of Jewish disproportionate representation versus like, let's just study the science, you know, saying, okay, you got money. You want to make intelligent decisions. You want to have good retirement. Hopefully you have a wife and kids and, uh, want to be able to send them to college and have vacations. And you just gotta make intelligent decisions. And you're saying like, this is a wisdom I want to acquire. And, uh, you know, like you may not have expected to there, if you never knew anything about Orthodox Jews till you got into investing. And then you get to New York and you say like, wow, like, like there's these whole office where everyone has a yarmulke. And even like, you, that somewhat irrelevant to the field, because it's just a science to it that you learn the science and profit from. And, you know, that's your average American who, uh, you know, who got, you thank God has retirements and does invest and has a strategy.
Yeah, it's, it's much harder, uh, these days, you know, everything, if you, you know, look at the charts of the, the pricing index of homes, how that chart looks, it looks pretty normal from, you know, in 1900 to 1970 or 80, then it just shoots up dramatically. You know, the, the, the cost of owning homes and everything that, that's why too, I'm also waiting. You know, I believe that, that we're going to have another major recession because especially we're, we're much worse shape than we were in 2008 or 2001 even. So, you know, I do have some money that I'm not putting in the markets because I'm hoping that, uh, you know, the, the prices will be better if you could purchase, you know, or put a larger down payment on a home, uh, if the prices go down. But it's tough to, it's tough to figure that all out, whether right now, if, if, uh, you're paying more interest on a home. But how much do you have to put down percentage wise to that house to be cheaper over paying, um, you know, paying a much, uh, uh, lower interest, but having a, a, a larger housing price. So it's like, I'm just trying to figure that out. I'm hoping they really get crushed and walloped and, um, you know, then maybe I'll scoop in and be able to get my first home or first condo or something. Cause it's, it's way too high right now. Can't even afford, um, mortgage payments and, and money to put away most people. So.
Or you can invest in yourself, you know, invest in your business, open up your own business, invest in your friends. And there's many ways to diversify, although, you know, likely stocks is the majority. I mean, besides your home event, you're like, if, if you're, if you're not exceptionally wealthy, most people, their home is their biggest investment. But, but you presumably, if you're upper middle class.
It's like, it's not really much of a investment anymore. It's, 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 you're just paying a lot of money per month for a mortgage.
I started when I first was like 19 or I mean, like 21, I did like the Primerica training. I didn't go through with it, you know, basic financial advising. And, and that's pretty clear, like those, those trends on, uh, on, uh, compound interest and how much you're going to need to retire, how much you need to save. And, uh, you know, so once you start that trend in your, you know, I mean, it's a common thing. It's like Kabbalah. Most people don't start looking into the markets till they get older. Um, you know, besides a few like business school people or people who really want to be rich and they're into it when they're young. I always knew I wanted to trade, like I, I was interested in the markets when I was young. And, uh, but yeah, I mean, most people, they, when they start looking into retirement and their savings and seeing how much they're getting. And then they think of investing on their own. And for your average person, investing on your own is probably a bad idea that they're going to do better off just with, uh, index ponder, mutual fund. And, uh, but if, you know, you, if you have a good head and you have insight onto the market, uh, you should invest on your own. And chances are, um, if you have areas of expertise, you'll, you'll, uh, you'll benefit from that.
Well, you can't grow, you can't grow your money anywhere. It's not like we, we used to have, uh, interest rates where we'd put your money in the bank and, and earn, you know, put it in a CD, a six month CD and earn 4%. Now it's you don't earn anything and you actually if, if interest is, I mean, um, if inflation is 3% a year, you're losing 3% of, of your money just by even putting it in the bank right now. So it's, uh, you're, you're losing just holding money.
Even watching CNBC now, you probably have a bigger insight into politics when you understand the finance, like maybe like President Trump and something like that. Like, you know, do you really know what his assets, what his investments are, who his business partners are, you know, who their interests are? And usually that's business. So your average person, you know, said, doesn't have savings, doesn't know anything about investment. And they just want to hear the news without thinking about how it relates to, uh, the financial interest of the person. But once you understand those things, um, to a large extent, that, that's the most important factor in the news. So it's like, you know, when I watch CNBC and even when I'm commenting on these things, um, you know, historically or current day, I like to give a little financial insight to it. And that's what, part of why I created this stream would be to add that element to these debates.
Yeah, no, that, that, that's great. You know, I appreciate you, uh, doing this too. Cause like you said, it's a, a lot, a lot of poor men are paying attention to these streams with angst for, for other things and, and focus in other areas. And they really should take a portion of that angst and focus and energy. And, you know, putting it to improve their, themselves and, and try to put money away and just, just look at things in a long-term strategy, you know? So yeah, it's very, very important.
You know, people have crazy like post-apocalyptic ideas so that, you know, they're preparing themselves for like some post-apocalyptic, uh, your revolutionary role. What, when you know, like, you know, you, you, God forbid 10 years will go by and people are just like, oh man, I don't have any savings. I don't have any money in the bank. You maybe have to declare bankruptcy and, uh, you know, saying, oh, maybe I should have, uh, you're not even like taking this duvid guy so seriously because I'm just saying what, uh, you know, what, what really any, any standard American advice would say like, you know, all this stuff on the politics and the J Q or whatever. Might be interesting. It's a topic of interest to me and a lot of people, but it's not going to put money in your bank account. It's not going to put your kids through college. It's not going to help you pay your debt. It's not going to, uh, you prepare you for retirement.
Right. It's just going to be entertainment for, uh, five, six hours a night when you get home from work. Now, um, I mean, I, I don't believe in the, the, the apocalyptic type of scenario, but you know, I do, I do believe in the dollar losing a lot of value potentially because, you know, the dollar being the reserve currency. And, uh, the, the, the way dollars and fiat currency has strength is if it's in demand. So if, if your, your government doesn't have a lot of debt, your dollar, your fiat currency is going to be stronger. And two, if you're a big exporter nation, uh, people need your fiat currency. It's, it's in demand because they want to buy your products. So the, you know, the USA has a reserve dollar, which is, uh, you know, a strong reason why it's in demand because people needed to buy oil, uh, among other things. And, you know, we always threaten Russia and there, there's, there's possible hints that we've threatened China about using the SWIFT system, like the international banking system where you have to use dollars to buy oil. And, uh, you know, China's talking about, you know, maybe they even have the ball rolling about the, the, the Petro dollar, you know, the one Petro dollar. Um, and so it just seems that there could be like an coupling from the reserve status of the US dollar. And then that'll cause a major, um, like exit, the holding the US dollar demand. And we could see a good, uh, a good percentage of, you know, our, our, um, what am I trying to say? Like our quality of life, our purchasing power will drop, take a huge drop from the dollar going down. So I'm, I'm in that sense, um, a little, little bit on the fear side.
Yeah, it makes sense to be on the fear side. But I say the lack of alternative in, uh, investment instrument, instruments has to be factored in, uh, you know, obviously the dollar, there's no real serious competitor to the dollar. All the nations or conglomeration of nations that even in conceivability could make a competition to the dollar don't appear to be moving in that direction. Um, you know, with like Brexit and, uh, the falling apart of the EU, you know, the Euro has, uh, declined, declined from, you know, it had strong, it'd been strong compared to the dollar, but that's dropped recently. And, uh, I mean, you hear a lot of people talking, they'll mention these in terms of geopolitical and that's why I say greater forces, um, your shared mutual interest, uh, that we might not even recognize, you know, the greater America, the use of the dollar and economic things where historically, you know, my, my friends in a Republican sense would have been friends because we had conversations like these. Cause you know, now you may even live with like the J Q and the alt right. It's like, you know, that, like these conversations are frowned upon, but historically that's what Republicans talked about. They talked about money, investment, capitalism, big, uh, business. Which is still kind of my, my outlook on things, you know, saying like, okay, the economy might collapse. These are important issues and I want a more spiritual approach. But, uh, you know, day to day, uh, you know, these things are probably the, you know, the more important things facing people. People are young or uneducated or don't have a method to even acquire the money to invest. Um, you know, you gotta take the first steps first, you know, get your education, get a skill, pay off your debt. And start saving money where you have enough to save to worry about investment. And so unfortunately in these spheres, probably the majority of people listening, uh, don't have savings.
Yeah, no, nope. I agree. It's, it's tough, you know, even for, for a long time in my life, it was, uh, tough imagining, um, you know, being in the position that I've gotten to now. So, you know, you just, you just gotta work hard and it, it's tough to even like turn off some of the streams that are going on. Cause like you'll be streaming, J F will be streaming, Luke will be streaming, Brundle fly. And then it's literally, you, you, you spend a lot of time putting information in your head that doesn't serve your purpose very well, or it's the same chatter every night. You know, so it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's rough out there.
It's related to the J Q. I mean, when I rapped about J F, you know, saying he's just a country boy with a high IQ. That, you know, is now the, you know, biggest thing in the public view or whatever. But it's saying that you could tell when he, he doesn't understand these things. And because he didn't go to business school and he didn't take high birth to, uh, you know, okay, so I, at my bar mitzvah, I already, you know, thank God I got, I got a lot of gifts. I had treasury bonds and then, uh, you know, I knew wealthy people, investment and my parents had investments. I went to school and as I said, I told a friend from Israel who backed me as a day trader. And, uh, and besides reading all these books and, you know, taking universities, Michigan Business School classes there. But you could see in terms of, okay, J F's a high IQ person. He knows his field, but like in the terms of finance, uh, he doesn't really know and understand that. And he might eventually, you know, like look at him like, you know, okay, I've got a little nest egg. I gotta invest and start saving. And he's looking into, you're becoming, you know, day trading and stocks. And he might have a high IQ, but there's still the learning curve and he's going to have to start on step one. And, uh, you know, obvious, obviously it has something to do with like rich dad, poor dad, where, uh, if you're brought up with assets, you know, you're taught how to protect those assets and you know about the stock market. Your parents are always looking at the stock market. You know, if you have a bar mitzvah, you might, uh, or, or some, you know, something where you get money as a kid or even, uh, you know, open up a business as a kid where these things are. But, but anyone can learn these skills, uh, but most people only learn them when they're applicable to them.
Right. Now my, um, my uncle was a big influence like that in my life. Like I remember at my 16th birthday party, he's like, you got, you got a debit card? And I'm like, no. He's like, all right, let's go to the bank. We left my birthday party. Went to go get a debit card and I put my birthday money in it. And then, um, you know, I remember, uh, you know, he was telling me about, about investing. And this was like before really you would look it up on computers like, like 22 years ago, I'd be looking at the newspaper and looking at the, the updated, um, stock price or the, the Vanguard mutual fund. Um, so yeah, unless you really have someone like that younger, it's really hard to, uh, to develop it. So if people could hear it, you know, in this, uh, this stream, maybe, maybe one person out of the 18 people watching will be like, you know, man, I need to focus 20% of my energy on, on this type of thing and, and, you know, realize that I do have a future that I could grow.
Yeah, no, unfortunately the reality of the capitalistic system is usually in the beginning, I mean, no matter what you do, even just getting a job, that you're making other people rich, like for every dollar you make, you know, so thank God I had a friend from Israel and we were, you know, basically 50, 50 profit share. And he was probably getting a kickback on commissions, but meant for every dollar I made, he was making more than a dollar, but certainly in any business world like IT or something. If your boss charges, you know, a hundred dollars an hour for your service to the client and only pays you 25 or something like that. That's the nature of business and it makes it tougher for people into the business world. Cause like, I don't really like this guy. You know, like I'm doing all this work and being used to put money in their pocket. And so the initial stretch of building up a nest egg is the most difficult. And, uh, you know, that factor where, where you realize that you're, um, the rich are getting richer off of you. And there's no way for you to enter, um, the upper echelons of wealth without, uh, um, you know, bringing more wealth to the people who are already wealthy.
Oh yeah. I mean, at, at this point, I just need, uh, I need a wife or something to, to get more revenue. You know, I'm at the point where I'm like, you know, I'm doing decent by myself and I survive on my own. I have a, a pretty nice car, my, my own apartment. And, uh, you know, I, uh, have investments and savings, but now it's just like, you know, that, that raise would be a nice wife to have that actually is employed. And, uh, and I think that would be a huge, uh, that would unlock a lot of things in my life as well.
Or take your life more seriously. When you have a wife and kids and the financial obligations, okay, I'm going to give up on the streams, I'm going to give up on sports, I'm going to give up on these hobbies. Instead I'm going to read.
Give up on the beer a little bit more.
Yeah, I'm going to read like two, two hours, uh, two hours a night on finance or something like that. Or I'm going to spend hours every day looking up at start stock prices and checking the charts and saying like, if you love money. So I mean, usually it's like chess. The best people are people who just do it because they enjoy doing it. If you force yourself to do it, you'll get better at it. Um, but if you really just enjoy it, then you're, then you're going to look into it just to understand it. And, uh, usually those people walk away with a better understanding and actually more potential to make money. Um, but yeah, but I mean, certainly have a wife nagging you for money or, or kids that are, you know, looking into your budget would, uh, cause incentive. But you know, it's one of those things you're better off doing before it's too late, you know, saying objectively, they should teach this to like high school kids and college years that you don't want to be like 30. I mean, even if you look at it in 30, you don't want to be like, you know, Luke or something like that, just looking into it now. But even like looking into when you're 30 and, you know, looking at the learning curve as a person who took advantage to take a class or two in university. Or even, uh, in high school has already been trading, following the market since, uh, you know, since their youth.
Yeah. And I make a lot of, you know, decisions too, like I don't, uh, spend on frivolous things anymore. Like the TV, the flat screen TV I have is eight years old, you know, I, I don't really buy stuff like that anymore. You know, I'd love to get like a $150 wireless Bluetooth earbuds, but it's like, no, you know, you just, you just gotta sacrifice and go without things. So that's, that's another important part is, um, people need to control their, their spending habit to realize, you know, that what's important in life and, and those, those. And, and those, those little gadgets, like, you know, like we were talking about computers and Nvidia and AMD. You know, I was big into buying those computer parts for a while and then you realize that, you know, you spend uh, $500 on an item. Uh, two years later, that item is now uh, 150 bucks, 200 bucks. So it's like, you, when you purchase items now, I try to think, okay, will this thing hold its value? Like I bought a, I bought a Fender guitar the other day, because I'm, I'm real in the guitars, I've always wanted a, an American-made Fender. So I'm like, okay, you know, I'm not gonna lose much value in this purchase, whereas if I spent the same amount on a TV. I would lose 80% of its value in, in a few years.
Well, I'm glad you came on, I gotta get off, it's a shame to get off because I got 20 people watching, but uh. On this important topic, I, I might have to take it down or see if I could like.
Maybe you could just save the video, cut out that portion and then split the thing, split the two pieces together and upload that one video.
As Luke said, there's actually like a YouTube feature that does it automatically, so I'm, I'm gonna look into it or I might.
Well, thanks for having me on Doovit, it was uh, my first alt-right conversation and it was with you, so, so thank you for having me.
Okay, excellent, have a good night, everybody.
Talk to you later, guys, have, have a good one, everyone.
Okay, yeah, I'm glad everyone watched and enjoyed, I'm, I'm definitely gonna leave this up for at least a few hours. And see if I could delete that one part, if I have to delete the whole thing, unfortunately uh, that's the scenario. But I hope actually to start doing more of these uh, you know, stuff with my expertise, financial stuff. So any, anyone who knows more about this wants to come on, talk about it, um, you'll reach out, so have a good night, everyone.